Linda, do we have any communications other than what's on the agenda? Okay, and Scott, we wanted to have a real quick conversation here about the morning procedures at Bartle because we had a couple of, and I think we, there was one more, I think, on that topic, wasn't there, that went to the whole board? We got a follow-up email.
Yes, from another parent.
There was a third, yes, a third email, there's two emails on the agenda, we got a third email from a second parent about the same topic, so we wanted to give just like a few words about the morning procedures at Bartle.
Sure. So, actually, what I've done, first of all, is asked all the, directed all the principals to have a backup procedure in place until I meet with them next Tuesday, that has the teachers submitting attendance records on paper, as well as completing their Genesis, which is our Student Information System Online report. We believe there are two things that are, that could be hampering our efforts to be accurate about our attendance records. One is the move of all the student information from our old Student Information System, Power School, into Genesis. When we moved everything over from Power School, there was, something's got lost in translation. Some names of streets were changed, abbreviated, so we are having somebody go over every student record and make them whole again, make them accurate. But the second issue, which is what caused the, a third person to reach out to us, whose communication will be on the next agenda, likely on the 16th, is it was purely an internet problem. So, obviously, in order to submit our attendance records, we need an internet connection. One teacher at Bartle School had a dropped internet connection, and as a result, went to fill out the record and hit the submit button, walked away, the submit button, never pushed anything out because there was no connection to the internet at that time. Well, we only discovered the problem until much later in the day, which is what prompted us to make a call home. Hey, your child is not in school today, we wanted to make sure everything was okay, which is what precipitated the email. This person got a call at 3:30 PM later that day. So, the problems are twofold. Technical, well, actually, it's all about the technicals, but there's two technical problems there. So, right now, papers being submitted by both, the census is being submitted by both paper and electronically until Tuesday, when I make sure that all of our schools have a protocol in place to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen again. One, fix the technical problem, and two, have a backup plan in case we, in any way, shape, or form, are concerned that there might be a problem, technical problem.
Okay. Yeah, I really appreciate that reassurance because particularly, obviously, at Bartle, that's like when we know our kids, we love that we have a walking town and kids are just starting to walk to school on their own, and you know, there's the real possibility that a school could, a kid could leave home and the parents thinks they're safety, it's safely at school because they haven't gotten a phone call, and that could not be the case. So, particularly at Bartle, this is of utmost importance.
I just wanted to ask about the provisional plan that we have put in place, just really quick, if I could. So, the provisional plan guarantees that everyone's name should be accounted for by 10 o'clock, is that right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so, as you can see in the email I sent to the board on Friday night, we start our process right away, by the time it's all said and done, it's about 10 o'clock.
Okay. Because, you know, I understand that it takes a while for everyone to get their information in and out of the different conduits that needs to go through, but I still worry that 10 o'clock is quite late. If I'm letting my, for instance, third grader, which I don't have, but my imaginary third grader, walk to school, the child's leaving the house by 7:30. So, that means I'm not aware of anything as a parent until three hours almost later. That is troubling.
That's a very valid point. So, just keep in mind that the last half hour to an hour is all taken by the calls being made, though these are the calls we make when parents, and I'm very culpable of this myself, don't call in an absence.
Oh, sure.
It's a little more embarrassing when I'm not the person. But anyway, so, I mean, yeah, we, it's something I can address with the team, you know, is there a more efficient way we can do this? Maybe have multiple people make these calls? Right now, it's either the nurse or the school secretary, depending on the school. So, I'll look into that.
Yeah, and also, I'd appreciate if we could find out if this is an issue that has been happening for a while, or if this is something that is new due to the change in personnel in the main office at Bartle.
Okay.
Because I do understand that the main secretary is not there.
That's a good question.
She's in a new position, so, thank you.
Okay, so, we will move on to number eight, which is the approval of our minutes, which we're not doing tonight, we'll do next week at our voting session, but there is going to be one change to the September 11th public session minutes, I just happened to catch that.
Did you see the other thing I left you?
Oh.
I put it right on top of your computer.
Yes, yep. I have a second thing, too. So, the one thing was that it said in the minutes that Ann called the meeting to order. She did not, I did, so that will be changed. And then, we're also going to read in a correction to the minutes for 9:18 under Personnel, item number seven, approval of Administrative Assistant Central Office, it should say effective September 25th, 2017, not October 16th, 2017. So, that change will be noted as well. Does anybody have any other things they noted in the minutes? No? Okay, so, we'll move on to the Student Representative Report.
Hello, all. So, to start, in Irving, they just had their back-to-school night, and they welcomed parents back to school, and they were, and the parents were able to hear all about their child's year ahead. They also celebrated Respect Week, and it emphasized their long-year theme of kindness. Throughout the week, students read a book called "Kindness is Cooler, Mrs. Ruler," and learned a song called "Kindness is a Muscle." Students had an assembly to talk about teamwork and cooperation with community member and soccer coach Spencer. They also had a day dedicated to doing random acts of kindness, and ended the week as rock stars and had a concert with the whole school. And this Wednesday, Irving will participate in Walk to School Day, and they will walk from Stop and Shop, the Stop and Shop parking lot to the school, and it's at 7:55 AM, and everyone is encouraged to come.
The Bartle PTO just donated $15,000 towards a new playground for the school, and the Bartle Run for Fun Fall Fitness Initiative has started. Over 60 students are participating, and a record number of parent volunteers are supporting Mrs. Kirk and Mrs. Shannon. Bartle held its first Highland Park Bike rodeo in nearly a decade, decade, sorry. There were over 70 students who attended and received certificates for successfully completing the course. The bike rodeo was led by Colleen Wharton, Susan Welkowitz, Trish Sanchez, and George, oh, I'm sorry, Chris Gonga, and so many others associated with the Highland Park Safe Routes to School and Keep Millsix Moving. They also had their back-to-school night, which was attended by many parents, and they celebrated with cake, they, because they were kicking off a 50-year, I'm sorry, they were kicking off a 50-year anniversary celebration of educational excellence at Bartle School. And they've also held two student council meetings with over 75 students in attendance. There are 15 executive board members leading the student council. And Bartle School is also celebrating the Week of Respect with various kinds of activities.
In the middle school, they also just hosted their back-to-school night on October 3rd with over 180 families attending the event. Representatives from the Highland Park community, such as Safe Routes to School and Sustainable Highland Park, were also present. Families were able to follow their student schedules and meet their teachers while learning about the programs offered at the middle school. Tomorrow, and on the 24th, Highland Park Middle School teachers will be engaged in professional learning community meetings, led by professors from Columbia University's Teacher College, as they continue to, as they continue their explorations into hidden biases and microaggressions and how they relate to education. Last week, there's, the students observed the Week of Respect as well. Middle school students attended a Week of Respect Assembly with presenter Preston Pugmire. The theme of respect was explored through interactive scenarios and musical interludes. And this week, it is Spirit Week. Each day, each day this week is themed, so on Monday, it, well, today, it was Wacky Hat Day. Tuesday is Twin Day, Wednesday is Pyjama Day, Thursday is Sports Shirt Day, and Friday is Color Wars. And at the end, they will have a pep rally. And finally, their Students in Action Club are, is organizing to raise awareness and assist the victims of the hurricane that recently struck Puerto Rico. On Wednesday, a survivor that was recently rescued will be speaking about the hurricane and how students can get involved in project-based learning to assist hurricane victims.
And we finish up the report with the high school. So, last week, the high school also participated in Respect Week. On Saturday, the Classic 1977 celebrated their 40th year high school reunion. Both Liv and I were tour guides, and we had a really great time showing them around both the high school and Bartle, which was their middle school at the time, and we learned a lot about the way Highland Park was 40 years ago, and different kinds of clubs that exist to this day, and how that kind of stuff has changed. That was really excellent. On Wednesday, the sophomores and juniors will take the PSATs. Seniors and freshmen will enjoy coming in two hours late. And finally, we also have the Global Awareness Group, Students in Action, Red Cross, and the Model UN and Congress Club are all raising, and I believe Key Club as well, are raising money for relief efforts towards hurricanes Maria, Harvey, and the earthquake in Mexico.
Great. Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions or comments for our very well-prepared students?
Very practical question. The two-hour delay is Thursday, you said?
Sorry, that got me.
All right, so, we will, thank you very much, ladies. We will move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I actually have one holdover, a student report of sorts. Ms. Vicki's class wrote us all a note. It was a Week of Kindness at Irving. Nothing like getting this on my desk when I walk back in to my office, so I'll hold it up for you.
You're not going to make us cry, are you? Don't do that.
But you can read it.
Want me to read it? Dear Dr. Taylor, oops, dear Dr. Taylor and Board of Education members at Irving School, we are learning about kindness. We wanted to say thank you for all you do for our students and teachers. You are going to make me cry, cut it out. Irving is such a happy place to learn and play. It is so bright and shiny and always clean. We love our playgrounds and like having picnics in the garden. We like to finger paint and do fun science experiments. We read lots of good books, too. Please come and visit us, your friend, Mrs. Zara and pre-K students. Can we have that laminated and hung over right there? I'm, I'm not kidding, why are you laughing? I'm completely and totally serious, like, we need that laminated and hung up here, hung right there, somewhere.
Just to remind us, I think everyone at this table, including myself, you remember it's a long time ago, we had kids this age?
In Mrs. Zara's class, no less. That was lovely.
With that, I'm going to walk to the podium. Don't worry, I'll make sure it's good, I'll make sure. So, this recognition I'd like to make of a member of our community, several members of our community, is much longer time in coming. When I first got here a couple of years ago as superintendent, even before I started, I was asked by the mayor to come to her office and talk about something called, actually, I don't even know if you had the name in place, it was something like Giv'zahoot, but maybe it wasn't all fleshed out at that time. And it spoke volumes about why I was so anxious to start my work here, because it's, it's what it's all, all we are about as a community. I want to read a little bit about Highland Park Giv'zahoot, then I'm going to invite members of the group that are instrumental in having gotten this off the ground, and they'll speak a little further about some of the details. It's a great way for us to get to know about a program that I bet a lot of us don't know a whole lot about. First of all, back in 1516, the, one of the first things that Giv'zahoot did is work with the Elijah's Promise Soup Kitchen in New Brunswick to start providing bag lunches for our kids here in Highland Park on those days when school wasn't in session. So, you're talking about holidays during the school year, Thanksgiving, Teachers' Convention. Also, the kids who came out were treated to a movie, games, things that would entertain them for a few hours, and then we had volunteers from our high school supervising the kids alongside with volunteers from our senior population. So, fast forward to the summer of 2016, the Borough partners up now with Global Grace Cafe. Most of you know about the cafe, which is based out of, out of the church on Second Avenue. And then, the community food pantry got involved, and they helped make the partnership that was starting up possible by donating ingredients and supplies that went to the cafe and then got, went in to, in return to the kids' lunches. This very past summer, the fund took another step forward, and Giv'zahoot actually sent 10 of our students to a recreational summer camp at no cost for, to the families, these are for those families in need who couldn't otherwise afford to send their kids to summer camp. In addition to the summer camp, HP Giv'zahoot was able to send four high school students to a special mentorship program called Youth Roots. It's a camp that meets during the summer, it's motivational, and it encourages kids to combat bias, violence, and intolerance in their communities. So, it's without further ado that I would love to invite everyone who showed up, who's a part of Giv'zahoot, to come up here to the podium. Mayor Mittler, please share some more that I may not have already about the program.
Sure. So, basically, I'm one of those people that when she sees something that doesn't look right after I start crying, I then try to figure out a way to make things better. And you can only do that sort of thing when you live in a municipality like Highland Park, where we really do live the "it takes a village" slogan. So, basically, my, my office in, mayor's office in Borough Hall used to be downstairs with, had a big window that looked out on the parking lot in front of the Senior Rec Center. And I noticed that on days when school wasn't in session, there were a bunch of kids ranging in age from, I would say, five or six to 14 or 15, just hanging around in the parking lot. And then, you know, sometime during the day, they would wander into our building looking for food for lunch, or food around lunchtime. And so, several of us would get them food. So, this went on for a little while, and then I spoke to Superintendent Taylor and learned that at that time, over 36% of our kids were on free or reduced lunch. And so, their parents weren't around when school was closed, and they weren't getting any nutrition during lunch. And so, a few of us in the building decided we would start asking residents for donations to help us feed the children. And people stepped up immediately. The fund was started a couple of years ago. To date, we've given out over 400 lunches. We still have a partnership with Elijah's Promise and also the Global Grace Cafe, and as Dr. Taylor was saying, in a truly sustainable way. We work with the food pantry, who helps us with extra food they may have that we can donate to, to the Global Grace Cafe, and they, in turn, provide lunches for our children. What we are doing by partnering with Global Grace is we are also helping some of the new immigrants and refugees to this community earn their own living, because they actually run the cafe and earn an income out of it. So, in a truly sustainable manner, we are helping our children and also the new residents of Highland Park. So, we, right now, it's, the fund started with, you know, a couple of hundred dollars. We now have over $4,000 in our treasury, and we decided to get serious about the group that's running this. And so, Michael Buckman has stepped up as chair. We have several other residents that have now assumed positions on the board, and we, instead of having my office as the sort of stewardship of this, we've now made it an official Borough Fund, so that it fits under Councilman Matt Hirsch's portfolio of Health and Human Services. So, Matt's council group will be very involved in the programs as we go forward. It is still primarily driven by donations from our residents. You probably see us out there with these self-made, I'm always making fun of these jars we collect money in, but there, there are arts and crafts on, on the outside of these giant jars. And Michael and his team have been out there walking all of our fairs, setting up tables, and collecting funds. This is really a partnership between the municipality and the Borough Board of Ed, because we couldn't do this without all of you. We reach out to the parents of the children that need the kind of help we're offering, and you do that for us. So, so, I really appreciate all of you and what you've been helping us accomplish here in Highland Park. Mike, did you have anything you want to say?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Mike Buckman, current Chair of Highland Park Giv'zahoot. This is the part where I thank the Academy, I guess. Really, I have a list of people who, who are involved and ought to be recognized. Highland Park Giv'zahoot Committee supports our community's children, providing free lunches when school is closed, summer camp scholarships, and by sponsoring peer mentoring services. This year, we're partnering with the high school to develop student mentors who will assist incoming freshmen, become more successful students. We'll play that by ear and see how it goes, and I'll have more information, which I'll share with the mayor as we go on. In terms of recognition of those who contributed, of course, the mayor, Monica Jackson, who is the communications coordinator, handles a lot of the operations of Giv'zahoot, including giving out vouchers for meals. And Andrea Costas-Bay, who's the Recreation Arts Program Coordinator, who's helped us with the summer camp program. We have a liaison in your school, Susan O'Daddo, who's our liaison. And in terms of the high school mentoring program, Elizabeth Asamoah, the teen center coordinator, and Principal Michael Lassiter have been working with us. Naturally, want to thank the Global Grace Cafe and the Highland Park Performance Church that houses it, as well as Elijah's Promise. And our committee, Sylvia Hove, Eva Love, Jim Paulos, Marilyn Pruce, Evelyn Setehy, and Tom Scafami, as well as other friends and neighbors who help us collect donations at public events, and those who generously support our work. And I look forward to working with the schools to figure out how we can best serve our students. We have so many who qualify for free and reduced lunch, and we would like to be able to reach more of them with the service. We have to figure out how it's convenient for them to get the benefits. So, thank you very much.
I'd like to invite Board President Simarusti up and one of our student reps to take pictures, and present to each of the Giv'zahoot's leaders a certificate you can frame.
It's pretty awesome. It's pretty awesome. Girls left our stuff to the cafe, and all that. You know, it's so awesome.
don't do, I like to walk around. Have a good night. But what I'd like to show you now is very data-heavy, and I feel like I need to sit for it so I can just focus on, on the screen. If you could direct your attention to the white screen, I'll start to show results from the most recent park administration.
Is it?
I encourage the community watching and, and the board to download this presentation. It'll be placed in the superintendent's area of our district website, probably later tonight after the board meeting, so you could actually download this and, and look at all the scores. First things first, I would like to make sure we all understand some of the language. When I show you scores and I refer to passing rates, I'm talking about all those students who either obtained Level 4 or Level 5 on the park, either they met or exceeded expectations. It is required by the State Department of Ed that 95% of our students participate in the park administration. What you see before you are the quote-unquote opt-out rates, or the rates of students who didn't take the test. The, the numbers at Bartle and the middle school have gone up, at the high school, they've gone down, and I strongly believe the reason for that is because now that the graduation requirements are becoming more rigorous, more parents and guardians are having their student, their children take the test, I think by now, most of you know that the freshman class, of which I have a daughter in, is the first class that must either take the park, have at least taken it and passed it, or taken it and qualified via a portfolio process. And I can talk more about that at some point after tonight. Our average participation rate is 86.6% district-wide, which, by the way, is not too far off from what other districts similar to ours that, that may look at the park as, as not necessarily the most valid of assessments are seeing. For instance, Monroe Township, I know, last year, here in Millsix County, had hovered around an 85% district participation rate. So, it's not uncommon that districts don't meet the 95% participation rate. Now, what happens if you don't meet the participation rate? Well, you have to develop a corrective action plan. And the corrective action plan is a series of action steps that I develop in concert with my leadership team, that shows the Department of Education that we're taking steps towards encouraging more people to take the test. I had submitted a cap last year, I have not heard anything from the Department of Education since, and this was last summer, summer of 2016. So, I don't know if this is something that the Department of Ed is stepping away from, or if I'll get a note in the mailbox one day from the Department of Ed saying, you're in big trouble because you didn't meet the participation rates. Now, I can tell you this, before I show you the scores, how participation rates could come to factor into things that some of us may deem important, I've had Mrs. Knapp, one of our supervisors, investigate the National Blue Ribbon Awards process, because I believe our high school could qualify for a Blue Ribbon Award. And turns out that we, we appear to rank in the top 7% to 8% statewide of schools, and according to the National Blue Ribbon ranking criteria, we have to be in the top 10%. We qualify on many levels. The one criteria that we don't satisfy is our participation rate in park. So, it's things like that could, that could negatively impact us. However, other than that, I really...
I highly doubt that would be compelling to many parents.
Oh, wow. If it gives the district blue, bro, Blue Ribbon status.
Forget my objections to park.
So, I'm going to, with that, I'm going to dive into the data, and let me, I'm giving you a lot more information than I have, than I have in the past, because this is the second year of the administration, and we can finally start looking at some growth data, as opposed to just comparing last year's scores to previous, previous scores, which really didn't serve as a baseline. So, we finally have a baseline, 1516 scores, and we can compare our 1617 scores to the 1516 scores. So, I'm going to show you a lot of data, I've broken it out by subgroup. I'm actually, I've actually broken it out by not only showing you the, the gaps among our subgroups, like our black students, our economically disadvantaged students, Asians, whites, so on, so forth, but I'm also going to show you what growth, if any, we see from 1516 to 1617 in our subgroups, among our subgroups. I preface what I'm going to show you by, by sharing my disclaimer that I shared last year, share every time I talk about park scores. I questioned the validity and reliability of the scores for a number of reasons, one of which is a middling participation rate. I really don't think 85, 86.6% is that great of I really don't think 86.6% is that great of a participation rate. One. And two, I think the administration of a computer-based assessment that's so standardized is questionable in its authenticity in really showing us what our kids can do. But that being said, let's take a look at the scores. First, I'm showing you the Bartle scores. Overall, what you're gonna see as I present the data is the scores at Bartle and the high school show that we're outperforming, for the most part, the state and the nation. It's our middle school scores that are definitely struggling when compared to our peers in other regions.
Can I just clarify that the nation at this point taking the park is maybe five states?
It's four, Darcy.
But I think this was last year.
Oh, right, right, okay.
I think we might have been at five last year. So, the national comparison has kind of been...
It's a relatively small sample group.
Has been kind of tossed out the window. This is like us compared to Louisiana, you know? Like, it's...
My recommendation, as you look at the data, is to just take it in, take in a big-picture look, and then if you want to dive into the numbers more carefully, you can download the information, and I'd be glad to go over any questions, concerns you have. Here's a two-year comparison of scores from last year to this year in each content area. You're also gonna see, as I move forward, that math... If we're gonna compare two subject areas, we appear not to do as well in math as we do in English, Language Arts on the park.
I'm sorry, I have a question. The Math III ELA, that means third grade, right? Like, that's the... I'm not familiar with the different levels of it. So, that means third grade, then fourth grade, then fifth grade?
Yep.
Thanks.
And incidentally, you are gonna see some big bumps up, some big bumps down. So, my recommendation is look at the big picture, and the big picture tells me that math is, of course, the one area which we struggle the most. Now, here's a look at our subgroup data. And if I'm going to use park data for anything, this is what I would use it for, is to look at how kids in different subgroups are performing. Granted, the data might not be as valid as I'd like it to be, but this still does give me a sense of what I might need to do to look further into potential disparities in achievement amongst subgroups. Now, the next series of slides are gonna show you the comparisons from last year to this year by subgroups. So, this first subgroup is the special education subgroup. And you could see, based on this data, we've greatly improved in this area, in the area of working with our special needs students. Now, look, if I had to say, there are reasons for it. I think one is we're working harder to expose all of our students to rigorous curricula. We're trying to promote more inclusion and provide more of a co-teaching model that has both our special educators and our general educators partnering together, so kids feel more connected to the classroom. We're also improving our intervention services at all levels, including basic skills. This next page shows you the black subgroup data from one year to the next. Also, keep in mind that when talking about sample groups, when we're talking about subgroups, we're referring to maybe 10 to 15 students in each grade who qualify to be part of the subgroup.
I'm sorry, so this is the percentage of kids who, quote-unquote, "passed"?
Yeah, correct. These are just a percentage of students who are getting a 4 or a 5 on a 5-point scale. This next subgroup shows the economically disadvantaged...
And for each of these, do we... In each of these grades, do we actually have enough kids in these subgroups for the data to be reported?
That's a good question. So, what you're referring to is suppression.
Correct.
So...
Because, I mean, could you go back one?
Yep.
When you see that, it makes me wonder about numbers. You know, if you have three kids taking it versus 10 kids taking it, your numbers can look very skewed, because if you have three kids and all those three kids happen to be low, you can have really no...
Absolutely.
I also... I didn't know what you meant by "black subgroup." Is that...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's talking about the racial breakdowns that the tests use.
I have always had this question. Is that children of mixed descent as well? Like, children of mixed descent?
No, that's a separate category.
How... So, how do we determine...
It's all dependent on the demographic information we get from parents and guardians.
Self-identified demographic information. Okay. I'm wondering, are we handing out ancestry.com links at the beginning of the year? Like, how? It's just a bizarre subgroup. I apologize.
So, it's a great question. So, when a student comes to us in the middle of the year, we register the student, we ask that they provide us ethnicity and race identification, are they Hispanic, white, or not Hispanic?
And we keep track of this in terms of the park? For what purpose?
The state reports out this data because it's what it uses to determine whether schools are considered priority focus or... Oh, gosh. Priority focus.
Reward.
Thank you.
Because if you have lots of rich, white suburban students, you're a poor school.
There you go. And the primary reason why the middle school was identified as a focused school was because of the gap they saw in the data amongst subgroups.
And this is determined in a greater weight than economically disadvantaged?
That's a separate category.
It's a separate category.
Correct.
And these are students who have been identified through our free and reduced lunch program forms to qualify.
Yeah, I don't mean to sound like I'm criticizing your reporting. It is not your reporting. It's that it's just... It's difficult to understand the purpose of the subgroup definitions and why we take an accounting of that. But if it's mandated by the state, it's mandated by the state. That's it.
And I'm... By the way, I'm meeting Greg by showing this data to the board right now. I have until October 30th to show you this information. So, I'm doing my part as, you know, as a chief school administrator. Let me come back to Darcy's point about suppression. Suppression refers to the Department of Education suppressing or hiding the subgroup data in cases in which 10 or fewer students in a subgroup have tested. But that data is only suppressed or hidden from public view, so it's not reported out to the newspapers, it's not reported on the Department of Education website, it's not reported on the performance report. But we still obtain that data, and...
That's what you're using.
And I'm showing the raw data to you.
But I think it's important to note it, because that does create incredible... The reason that the state suppresses it is because it creates incredible volatility in the numbers, and it can look like, "Oh, my God, what's going on in Grade 3?" Well, it may be that because there's only one kid in Grade 3, and they, you know, happen to also have special needs, you know? So, it doesn't necessarily give you a true picture of what's going on.
It's not as if...
Kids are gonna be in all these different little pockets, and it's...
It's not as if in third-grade Language Arts, all of a sudden, we had 50 special ed students pass the exam, pass the park, going from a 5.9% to a 28.6% passing rate. This next subgroup I'm going to show you is our Asian students, and the comparison of data from last year to this year, and our white subgroup at Bartle. And so, now, I'm gonna move on to the middle school. This is the data that shows how we compare to the national norms and the state norms. And now, I'm showing comparison from last year. And I'm gonna get into the subgroup data. The number... The spaces in Math 6, 7, and 8 illustrate a 0% passing rate in those areas. My graph didn't actually show 0%, but that's why there's a space there. So, in the case of Math 6, we're talking about our black subgroup.
And is that students who refused as well?
Sorry?
Are those students that refused as well?
No, any reported score... No, does not count kids whose scores were voided or opted out. But a student could have started the test and not taken enough of it, and...
And does Pearson give you any data on that? I mean, because plenty of teachers have reported kids who just get on their thing and go... And tap through their test, and then they're done, and they're done with it in three minutes. You know, so, I mean, look, the students are going, "Uh-huh, I've seen that happen." You know, I mean, there's...
I don't... We don't get that information from Pearson now. Could we request it, potentially? But they're not forthcoming about that.
This whole thing is just...
We get exclusive individual score reports in August, and they simply show us the numbers, cluster areas.
So dynamic, right? They promise such dynamic information.
Not so much. Subgroup by subgroup comparisons from one year to the next. Just be mindful that there could be some validity to improvements in that we didn't have intervention programs, to the extent we have them in place now.
Well, maybe that's not what you want to point out.
I'm referring to the 6, 7...
But I think this is like one of those fascinating cases of, you've got a chart, but what's that chart really telling me? You know, like, how many kids tested? You know, like, am I looking at the testing data of 10 kids and none of them passed? Am I looking at the testing data of one kid, and that one kid didn't pass? So, it's not...
For your edification, in the board drive are participation rates by subgroup.
By grade?
So, you're welcome after tonight or now to go into the board drive, and you'll see a document that's titled "Participation Rate by Subgroup." So, you can actually see the numbers we're talking about alongside my presenting the data with you. Also, the... I'm sorry, one second. Also, the raw data is in the board folder, so you can actually pull it up.
By grade?
Yes, it's by grade, by subject, and by subgroup.
Right. I mean, I would just say, like, in the future, for any presentations, it would be helpful to put it on the slide somehow, you know? So, you're not just looking at these kind of disembodied numbers that don't, you know, like...
Well, maybe what I could do is have a...
If that's 20 kids that didn't pass it, that's far more concerning than if that's one kid who couldn't pass it, who's... Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it's not telling me much, otherwise.
Oh, I was also wondering if we're tracking the grades' progress? So, like, you know, the eighth grade in 2015 to 2016 is different from the eighth grade to 2016 to 2017?
See, that is like the best question ever. And I've only seen that done once, one year eons ago, when I was on the board, like, five years, six years, I don't even know how many years ago. Actually, Lauren Fraser came to a board meeting, and they, at that point, they were having principals report out on... I think at that point, it was even still just NJAS, and she did exactly that. And it was so much more interesting to look at a cohort as they moved across. And she was actually able to, when she looked at a cohort, and of course, then you had years of the same test. Like, here, Dr. Taylor and I were just talking about this the other day. This is actually only the second year that park has even been the same test, the same administration, you know? Like, because the first year, it was administered in two parts, and then the year after that, it was the one, and then this one, it was the one. So, this is like the closest we've even come to being able to compare apples to apples. But at that point, she had multiple years' worth of data, and she could follow kids. And you could see an uptick, like, in every grade that you looked at that, you could see an uptick. But I agree with you. When you're just looking at last year or this year, you're like...
I was just wondering because...
Totally different group of kids, totally different... You know, it's almost like a meaningless comparison.
It's a great question, and that's how I used to actually report it out in Kettleworth. How about... I'm gonna provide a second report to the board, not in public, because I don't know if I want to take up more time going over the data, but I will definitely email the board as a follow-up within the week, cohort data, too.
One of the things that I would be interested in knowing more about, now that parents can actually ask to have their kids pushed ahead into a math level that the schools... The way that the school does placement, the schools have said, "You're not eligible for this class," the parents say, "But I want my kid to take that class," and look at how they performed then, like, breaking it out, like, how they performed in terms of their final assessments. Because, you know, you have kids who are technically seventh graders taking eighth-grade math. You have kids who are sixth graders taking eighth-grade math.
So, that's a...
You have different age groups. So, you could have a situation where you have a sixth grader in eighth-grade math, they do well in the course, but when they go to take the, you know, whatever assessment... I'm not saying that park... I have very particular views about the park and whether or not it actually assesses anything, but, you know, they go to take a standardized-type test, and, you know, does the test really reflect their ability, or does it reflect their maturity level? And, you know, so, I think there are things that can be hidden in the numbers in terms of us having math classes that are actually, you know, tiered classes. You know, it also indicates exposure. You know, did people prep for the test? Did they, you know, versus just taking it cold?
You're talking about all the variables that people bring up when they contest the validity of this data, right?
Right.
You know, which is... It's a catch-22, everyone. On one hand, I don't want to continue testing students. On the other hand, there is a reason why the middle school is getting something out of the math scores that they're collecting from their kids to measure rate of active progress assessment, because it is more... It appears to be more authentic data. It's more aligned to some of the class grades we see the kids achieving. We know all of our students are taking that assessment, right? We haven't had very... We've had very few kids opt out of math at the middle school. So, I would like the board to explore that, especially the curriculum committee, potential of expanding that maybe to fifth grade one at some point, or to ninth grade.
How about we trade U-Mobivax for additional math time?
Oh, my gosh.
How about that?
So, on that note, I'm gonna continue with my presentation. This is the black subgroup data from the middle school. Economic disadvantaged students' performance. And now, I'm gonna move on to our Asian subgroup and our Caucasian subgroup. And the high school scores.
My daughter took the algebra test last year, eighth grade. She doesn't show that in those reports. I don't want those to go to state. Right, so we can... Okay, right, so if you're preparing scores, we need right to right.
Our subgroups. I mean, the obvious theme here is, regardless of your thoughts on the data's authenticity, there are definite disparities among our black special education and economically disadvantaged populations and our Asian or white populations. One could argue about cultural bias here. I mean, there are all kinds of things that play into this. Olivia?
Are the middle school students who are taking Algebra I and geometry counted in these scores?
That's a great question. No. So, these are just the high school Algebra I students.
Okay. So, there's... Those scores were included in the middle school reports?
Correct, although I didn't report out on that in my last slide, but yeah, I could provide the data. Did you want to say something?
Oh, no, just 'cause my kid took the algebra test last year, and I know, you know, she passed it. So, there's missing data.
Do you like to...
Oh, God, I can go put it up there on the screen for you. But, yeah, I had noticed that the algebra...
I was just wondering...
Students taking algebra at the middle school were just not reported on at all.
And I guess, just in that kind of vein, it's important to, I guess, like, I get... For me, it's... I think about how, like, Liv and I took the park at one point in ninth grade or whatever, but then since... In 10th grade, maybe two, but then since 11th grade, we haven't had to, because we're in AP Lang, and so you, like, place out of it. So, then there's also a group of people who are...
That's right.
Probably very skilled at taking these kinds of standardized tests and performing well on that, for the most part, who have left the group, and so that should shift the scores, too. And I guess I don't know whether or not that's...
Particularly in the English section of it.
Particularly in the English section of it, yeah.
Very good point.
Math, too.
Now I'm going to break, finally break down subgroup data at the high school, special education subgroup. Our black subgroup. And our Asian students at the high school.
And Scott, to be, to be clear, the kids who are in these subgroups, they can be in...
Multiple.
Two or three subgroups. So if kids happen to be in, not, not passing in, in these, and they're in those subgroups, it's going to weigh over onto all, possibly all three of them.
Correct.
Two or three, yeah.
And our white subgroup. So I'll provide all this data on the web. Again, the raw scores and the participation rates are on the board drive for your review. That concludes my lengthy superintendent's report.
All righty. Does anybody have any other additional questions for Scott on that?
No.
All right. So we will move on to our committee reports. Michelle, could you do the curriculum and instruction report? Oh, she just stepped out.
I'll be right back.
Michelle? So, let's see, Linda, can I just go out of order? Okay. So why don't we move on to what's next? Finance?
Finance.
No, first, no, yeah, finance, sorry. Rob, could you do finance, please?
Right, so the finance committee did meet this evening. I think we'll first just go through the agenda items. And so items, well, item one is the committee report itself. Items two through seven on the, on the agenda are the traditional bill lists and travel spreadsheet, including board member travel. And this month, there will be several of us attending the school board meetings in Atlantic City for one or more days. Item eight is professional services related to bilingual evaluation services and psychiatric evaluation services. Nine through 11. Those are out-of-district special needs placements. One is a change, one is a settlement. Item 12 is a donation from the Bartle PTO toward a new Bartle playground. This is an ongoing and large project and more funding is going to need to be sought for, you know, toward the, toward the playground. Thirteen also is for the Bartle School and this is a donation of six new basketball backboards for the Bartle School. Item 14, non-public school technology purchases. So this is simply a pass-through. That is a resolution that involves technology equipment that's being purchased by another school district or by another school, private school, that is being passed through our budget. And 15 and 16, these are resolutions to approve the submission of the comprehensive maintenance plan. These comply with CUSAC and we, in this, we calculate the district's current facility needs and spending and we do this each year at this time. So in our get-together, in our meeting this evening, we did talk about a memo that Mark, who was absent this evening, had put together analyzing our special needs, special ed needs, which have been identified in the district and are, as always, a challenge. But in this case, these needs have been identified to the extent that we did, we were required to add some staffing. We have added, we are adding, what, four new staff members for special ed in particular? Is that correct?
Two par, yeah, three paraprofessionals and one teacher.
Right. Three paras and a teacher. And we are watching this very carefully. I mean, this is always, always a challenge if you're on the finance committee and doing budgeting at this time of year. We have seen changes both up and down. This year, we were slightly caught off-guard, but we are still under budget by about $125,000 for the, for the year. We received revised analysis of six-period positions and we reviewed those and those are now over budget by about $42,000. So this is somewhat of a pattern this year, which is somewhat concerning to us and which definitely is requiring a very steady hand and continued oversight to make certain that, you know, we stay within our, within our guidelines. And in some cases, that requires moving some monies from within the budget, but we were fortunate to receive additional monies this year and are actually needing to go into those monies from the state. Scott had put together a report to reinforce the need to hire a second volleyball coach, which showed us that the volleyball program is expanding and I think that's a fantastic thing. We have 34 students that have signed up and are playing and we felt by comparing the participation in, on that sport, in that sport, with other sports, that we needed to have one, more than one coach overseeing those student athletes. And then additionally, we reviewed enrollment within the district, which right now stands at 1,607 students, which is within a range. We had been at about 1,670 at the end of last school year. We were maybe slightly lower than that, but we're, we're within a range. And I think just going back a few years, a lot of folks would, would remember that we are, at this point, I think we're about 200 students higher than where we were even two, three, four years ago. So we, the district has grown and if you look at the grade by grade, there are a few grades that are maybe 106 or 110, but for the most part, our grades are, well, last year's graduating class was, I think, 140 or 141. Mostly, we're in a range of about 125 kids per class, which is significantly larger than it had been even five or six years ago.
Great. Thanks, Rob. Does anybody have any questions for...
Just a quick question about the staffing. So the paraprofessionals and the teacher, those are all at which school or are they...
Those are at the Irving School.
Okay. And the, are we fully staffed in terms of the middle school and the high school at this point?
We are. We, as you'll see in, on the personnel agenda, we are recommending compensating one teacher, senior campus, to teach an additional period in order to bring down our numbers in other areas, including social studies in sixth grade.
Okay, okay, thank you. At some point, would there be any way for Mrs. Boudin to come back and give us sort of an update as to what's going on, what trends she's seeing at Irving?
Absolutely. I think she, I'll go back to my calendar. I think she did it mid-year, around January, February. I can have her come back again.
Okay.
Do with that.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to quickly thank the Bartle PTO for that lovely donation.
Yeah, that was huge.
That was humongous.
Yeah, that's great.
So all those, you know, back-to-school book purchases and all that stuff they do, they do a lot of work. The PTO does so much work all across the district and, I don't know, it's pretty important stuff, apparently, can really bring in a lot of money.
I did, I, I was actually unclear, the six backboards, are those for the, to replace what's in the gym or outside?
Correct.
Inside?
Including hoops, too. So, they're placed.
Oh, good.
Add hoops. And that's hoops, backboards.
Right. And I'm excited that we have four board members going to workshop this year. That's pretty cool, so...
Quite an improvement.
And don't forget, everybody should attend the workshop we're doing Tuesday at 2:30, I think.
When, when we have funds that are donated for a particular purpose, like the playground, and we know we need additional funding for that sort of improvement, what happens to those funds between when they're donated and when we can actually move forward on that sort of action?
Linda, could you repeat the question, Rob?
So if we have $15,000 donated towards a playground and we're not in the position to fund a new playground right now, what happens to those funds in the interim?
It sits, it is stored in our special revenue fund, so it will stay there until it's needed.
Okay, thank you.
It's there, yeah.
All right. Michelle, we skipped you. Because I went, Michelle, could you give us the, no, you can't.
I just timed that bathroom, it's so...
So we're gonna, we're gonna go back to curriculum instruction.
Thank you. Okay, so we had our meeting on Tuesday, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, thank you. 5:00 PM, October 4th, I couldn't remember what day it was. Unfortunately, Ruth couldn't join us. It was just me and Rob and Dr. Taylor.
Michelle, can you just make sure you get as close to your mic as possible, so...
Yeah, sure. Wait, did I turn it off? I turned it off because we had the...
There you go. I didn't feel like I could hear you.
Hi. All of those gems, I've said already, have been lost. I'm really sorry about that, everybody. Okay, so, so we started our meeting kind of casual-like and we went off-agenda for a second. We started to talk about the substitute model that we have now in the high school, which is different from last year's substitute process. And so we're pooling together all of the classes that require substitutes in the cafeteria. I see smiles.
I was in there today.
So I, I mean, so far, so good, that's what we're hearing.
It's... Yeah, I would confirm that. I mean, I think that lots of times when there's a sub, not much work gets done in class and I don't think there's a lot to do to prevent that. But I think that in the two, two times that I've been in the cafeteria for a sub, one time I got a ton of math homework done because the gym teacher didn't leave anything to do and that was really productive. And then today, it was really easy to complete the assignment that we left. So I think actually it's, it's worked out really, really well. So, and it's really great that we are eliminating the, well, one, that, yeah, the cafeteria's air-conditioned, so on days like today, that was really, really nice.
Yeah.
But two, that we're eliminating all of these subs that are often kind of unreliable. So I think that's, I would, I would really, thumbs up.
Okay.
That's so good to hear. Because that was a, that was a big worry.
Right. And, I mean, I shared with the board before, like, when I went to high school, that was our situation in my school. It was very small. We couldn't afford substitutes.
I wouldn't do this in middle school.
Middle school might be different.
Yeah.
But yeah...
I don't know, we're ready for that.
The cafeteria seems to...
But high school, I think you guys can handle it better.
Yeah, you have so much work to keep you busy in high school. But yeah, so it seems like it's working out. Those are the reports from, you heard it live. And, yeah, so we started talking about that. But Dr. Taylor did mention that December is a time when there's a high frequency of teacher call-outs, for whatever reason.
I wonder why.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of stuff going on, so, so we'll see, we'll put it to the test truly in December. So we'll see how that goes. So then our formal agenda began and we started to talk about the agenda review. We talked about item number two on the agenda, which was student field trips. I'm, I'm talking about the proper agenda, not the curriculum agenda. Excuse me. So item number two is the field cost, the field trip costs. And Dr. Taylor said he would get back to us on the student cost if that was applicable.
It's reflected in the report.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's $20 a student. That number might go down if we, they raise money. This is the group that, I think Julia pointed out, Students in Action.
Oh, yes.
That's taking part in the Jefferson Awards.
Okay, so there might be some fundraising to...
Absolutely, as a result of their work.
Okay. So I'm glad that was taken care of. And then agenda item number three was the HIB incident report. And agenda item number four was the approval of the curricula for several different subjects. And I have to admit that working full-time and doing board work is not easy and so it took me a while to find the curricula that was being shared with us on the drive. It wasn't easy to find. It was actually quite difficult. And the only reason I found it was because it was directly emailed to us by Dr. Taylor in mid-September. So if anyone needs the link to that before our next meeting on Monday, I can forward you that link. I shared it with the rest of the curriculum committee.
I'm sorry, Michelle Trump, but maybe I ought to then place it, how about, do you want me to re-mail that email to everybody?
Yeah, maybe you could just tell us in the email where it's located on the drive because, you know, searching the drive doesn't always bring up what you're looking for.
Well, I didn't put it in the drive yet, but I had a link that you can go to a drive.
I did get the link, so I'll share that with everyone.
Okay, I'll let you do that, then.
I did get the link, but, yeah, I was looking for it on the drive, you know, proper, so I couldn't find it on the drive. And then I found the email that you sent. So that's where I got the link from. But I'll, I'll just email that around, I'll forward that to everyone. But yeah, if you could put that up on the drive, that might be an easier place to locate it. And I did go and take a look. I went specifically to the first grade ELA and I wanted to look at some lessons. I thought that would be, you know, interesting to see. And I couldn't open the lessons. I couldn't, I didn't have access. It was some sort of protected thing. I had to ask for permission to look at the lesson. So I'm waiting on the permission for, from whoever...
Fix it all, so you don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, don't bother.
Yeah, but once that happened, I thought, okay, let me just not look at the rest of them because it really looked like I was going to hit a lot of different, like, dead ends. So if everyone could take a look at the curricula before our meeting, because we're going to vote on it next Monday, just take a cursory look at it, that would be great. And I'll send the, the link around. Also, we discussed, part of the curricula that was taken out of our agenda was the health and sex ed curricula for the high school, I believe, or was that the K-5?
Which subject area?
You were, it was number 16 on our list. It was the sex ed and health...
Correct. That's not going to cut to you until the next board meeting.
Okay. So, so that was, you know, set aside or tabled, however you want to say, but we did talk about in our meeting that there was a discovery or confirmation that in the middle school, the students are separated by gender when they are taught sex ed. So as far as the, you know, community that is not in the classroom in the middle school, this was news to us. So as a member of the Gender Nonconforming Policy Committee, I was particularly upset about this because we're using gender as the determinant for the education of our students. If you are gender nonconforming or if you are, you know, in the process of transitioning, there's a level of discomfort there that is difficult to describe when you are being asked, "Which class would you like to go into? The sex ed course for females or the sex ed course for males?" Disturbing is like a mild way to put it. So we did talk about that. We talked about some personal issues that might arise from discussions that need to happen to remediate that issue. But I think Dr. Taylor understands that this is of paramount importance, that we address this issue and that we put an end to this, this practice.
Yeah, I thought it was really cool that in fifth grade, the, the kids weren't separated. And I think the kids were kind of freaking out that they weren't separated, but then once they were done, they were like, "Yeah, all right," you know, like...
Yeah, I mean, we did talk about things like, you know, using, you know...
So it would be strange to go from not being separated to being separated.
Right, right. And, and one of my points in our discussion that I shared with you in the notes is that, you know, when we were discussing sexual, sex education and responsibility and consent and all these other issues, you know, most of the time, you're dealing with mixed genders in those scenarios. When you're actually using birth control, you're, you're using it with a person of the opposite gender, usually. So you might as well be in the same room when you're discussing these things. Like, the level of discomfort that, that, you know, you should multiply the level of discomfort with, with a gender separation for people who, who are not dealing with transitioning or gender conformity. So we discussed that and I'm glad that we did and we are dealing with that at the leadership And I shared with you the proposed schedule for that, starting March 31st. So this would be a spring exchange program where our students would be traveling to China. Previous to that, during winter break, I believe, Dr. Taylor said that himself and other members of the leadership team would be going to China to scout out the location. And apparently, all of these travel expenses will be paid by the Chinese families who are involved in this program. They shell out enough in fees for this exchange program that they cover all of our costs, including our leadership travel and our students and teachers' travel, their lodging, their meals, tuition of any kind. So our students are only required to provide enough money to pay for their own passports, travel insurance, and there was a third item that is slipped me.
And the visa.
And the visa, the student visa. So, I mean, that was, it's quite a program that they have going. So we did talk about timelines and other things that would, you know, maybe cause a little bit of trouble. Selection process for students to be selected to participate, how we get the word out to students in our district that this is something that is available to them at, you know, very low cost. And Dr. Taylor shared with me this Chinese Immersion Delegation Participation Handbook. And this is put together by the International Educational Group that organizes the exchange program, and also Elsie Foster Dublin's business, Aunt Elsie's Homestays. And I just happened to flip through it. I'm looking through it, and it said Chinese Culture in Brief at the top. So I said, "Let me take a look." So I noticed this during our meeting, and cultural differences are laid out in a visual format. And I'm gonna pass this around, because to me, this was kind of upsetting. I don't know that this is indicative of an exchange program as much as it is. I don't even know. But it was ... I'm hopeful that the exchange program in practice is a lot more useful to student learning than this handbook would indicate. Because this handbook, I don't know if you took a look at it, Rob, because I think you got one during our meeting, but, you know, it has these like tremendously offensive lessons that Chinese students have taken from being in American schools. So, I mean, it's a handbook. It's a couple, you know, worksheets put together. But I need to know a whole lot more about this Chinese exchange program and what the intended outcomes are. It just seems a little bit, according to the handbook, it seems a little bit not what I thought it was.
I've invited Elsie to present to the board on November 7th, and that'll be an opportunity to answer any questions you have.
So that would be great to have her here to discuss in detail. But feel free to pass that around, Judy. And then the next item we discussed was the Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction that Judy had said she would talk about in her personnel report. We also discussed some details of the Chinese exchange program, as I said, the selection process and other things. Dr. Taylor did indicate that, you know, he thought that a random selection would be the only fair way to do it. I see Darcy's face, it's distracting. So, you know, I anticipate a lot of questions. I hope that you all take a look at the handbook and take a look at the details of this Chinese exchange program and come up with questions. You know, ask in email form, or wait for November 7th when Elsie's here. But don't hesitate to, you know, take a deep dive into it. And that looks like it.
Michelle, I just want to also add that the Supervisors of Curriculum and Instruction will both will be here next week in case you have questions about the curriculum.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Patience.
I'm sorry. The agenda item number five, the Resolution to Approve the Submission of the School Self-Assessment for Determining Grades Under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act submission, that's available on the drive, and I do also encourage all of you to take a real good look at that.
And that's what we had tabled at the last meeting, and Scott let me know when we meant to go over the agenda, that he was able to get a, like, an extension basically from the state, so it's not, the fact that we tabled it is not gonna impact everything, but now we actually have a chance to read it before we adopt it, which is good. We like reading things before we vote on them.
Yeah, yeah, I encourage you all to take a good look.
And we're not gonna get dinged for it on Q-SAC, so that's great.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, it was important to take a look at that.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Of course. That was my next question.
How long have we been doing the Chinese exchange program? And how many years?
Have "we" said?
Yeah.
No. No, I'm ...
Of sending kids out.
But we're gearing up for a potential trip of what could be 15 to 20 students in April or spring break.
Okay. And we haven't discussed at all about how they'll be selected.
Well, this is the infancy stages. I want the board to be in on it. I want Elsie to answer your questions, address concerns. I hadn't even talked to the leadership team in detail about it yet. I mean, the timeline, if we're gonna go ahead and do it, I'd like to see us go ahead and send some kids to China if we can. Be January, late January selection of the students who would go.
So why does the Chinese pay for us to do this?
What does?
The expenses. Why is it all ...
What are the expenses?
No, why do we only have to pay that part?
That's a question for Elsie. All I know is that that's what they do. I don't know the rationale behind it.
And I'm sorry, did I hear you correctly that there's a delegation of leadership team people?
I was just gonna ask.
Go as well?
So three years ago, I believe Karen Lewis.
That had to be more than three years ago, my friend.
Four years ago, five years ago?
We're going five.
I have pictures. Maybe it was 2013.
No.
I'd say at least five.
When did the last handbook?
We've been on the board for three years. I mean, years before that is when they left, so it has to be ...
The district has been trying to get this going since then, but nothing ever came of their trip to China.
I'm guessing between six to eight years. That must have been ... Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah. So that would happen again? Is that what I'm hearing?
For us?
Yes.
It would happen to me, Mr., anybody who would be sending kids there, me, Mr. Laster, or Mrs. Oh. I don't think Mrs. Oh and Mr. Laster would end up going. We've already discussed the potential. Probably just be me.
Is that trip definite? Is that planned out and happening?
I'm sorry?
Is that definite, that trip to go to China?
The first part of your question?
Your trip to China. Is that a definite, you're going?
That I'm going?
Yeah.
No. It's all contingent upon whether we actually send students in February. I'm sorry, in April. If we're not gonna send students to go, there's no reason for me to go.
Okay, so I misunderstood then, because I thought that your trip during winter break was kind of a scouting trip. And then we would make the determination to send kids.
I would only go to make sure, first of all, that I know everything about what the trip is gonna look like for our kids. Two, to be able to come back in an orientation with parents and guardians of the kids who would go, be able to talk to them about what their experience would be, as opposed to having somebody like Elsie who is not intimate with the district.
So it would be that our decision to send and be a participant in this program would come first, and then the winter trip?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so that leads to, I guess my question is to this timeline issue. So I'm not understanding what, I mean, we would have to go through all of this.
Pretty quick.
Yeah. So Elsie will come in November, and then I would think by December, at the very latest, the December meeting, we would ...
Have a decision.
We would have a decision. And at that point, we would be ready to go with exact, you know, figuring out how to select the students, which I think should be a little bit more than simply random. I think kids who want to go should need to express something about why they want to go.
Look, I mean, we haven't even talked about this as a team, so I'm completely open to input.
Is there a reason we need to do this this year, and we can't, we're not thinking about doing this for next year, instead of like doing this mad rush for a timeline to get kids to go in the spring? I mean, we take far longer to get other programs up and off the ground. I'm just wondering what ...
Well, I don't know how involved it would be.
Because we haven't really talked about this in earnest to ...
I mean, I think it's doable. I don't think it's that involved. I think because the district doesn't have to do a lot of the planning, we have to do the approving, right? Most of that's on the people who are doing this work. It doesn't take a lot on our part. I say we consider it. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. If it does, it does. I mean, I think it's a nice opportunity for our kids, especially those who will never be able to travel to China, the kids who might be economically disadvantaged to go.
Well, I think that's where the selection part becomes really important.
Yeah, of course, of course.
The selection, but also the timing, and because the students will need to get their own passports and their student visas, students who don't already have passports, it's gonna be a longer process for them in terms of the timing. So, you know, the timing has to be looked at in terms of when that all would be done, so that you wouldn't run into a wall where by the time you got your passport approved and whatever, you got your money together, you got your passport, you then had to go apply for your visa, and then you ran out of time to get your visa before you had to travel.
Yeah, I just read an article, actually, that said that ...
Hold on, hold on, can I hold on? But we're gonna have Elsie here next week. Can we hold all of this?
Well, I just wanted to respond to something that ...
No, I know, I know, but I feel like we're going really, we're taking a deep ...
Right, so I just read an article that the time to apply for passports is now, not in December or January.
Yeah, I mean, so I want to put a pause on this, because we have so much to get through tonight, and it's already 9:00. So like, we can have this full-fledged conversation when we have Elsie here, and we can get more answers, because now we're just hypothesizing of what ifs. So I'd rather do this when we have her, if no one objects. So did anybody else have any further questions for Michelle on curriculum?
Going back to the separation of the sex ed classes, were we just exploring what the best practices of that would be at this time?
I did say to Michelle, I would like to talk to the teachers, get input before making any final decisions.
Okay.
So, yeah, we talked at length about the ownership that I think they need to some extent, that they're professionals on the ground. And I do recognize that there'll be different opinions on this. So I want to go through the motions before I make any decisions.
Okay. I did misunderstand then, because my understanding was that the buy-in was something that was important to you, Dr. Taylor, but that the determination of best practices had already been established when we wrote our gender nonconforming policy. So that was confusing to me.
Our gender nonconforming policy doesn't necessarily prohibit separation.
There's no such thing as separating a class out by gender if you are gender nonconforming.
Right, because then our policy then allows that student to make the choice based on what they're most comfortable with.
But there is no such thing as most comfortable with if you are gender nonconforming.
Right, which is why I was asking Scott. I thought we were just looking at what the best practices are for that sort of scenario.
And that's where I apologize, because my assumption was that when we had adopted that policy, that we had determined what best practices were.
For that specific course?
For all courses, for all education. All educational settings.
Right, but then we have educational settings where we have nonconforming students traveling with groups on overnight trips where there's separation between male and female, but we don't have a way of addressing that either. So I think ...
I think that in past practices, we've had students express their comfort, but that they were not forced to share a room with anyone that they felt uncomfortable with. So it was not a choice between male and female, it was a separate room or a shared room.
Right, I think even before we take it into that, into the gender nonconforming issue, just, is this best practice? I mean, why did we not do it in fifth grade, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna do it in sixth, seventh, and eighth?
And we don't do it in high school.
And we don't do it in high school. So why do we have this weird clump in the middle where all of a sudden, we've decided we have to separate the children now?
Darcy, I think from what I understood from our meeting, it was that this is a personnel ...
So let's not ...
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's the question. I mean, so if we deemed it best practice in fifth grade not to, and best practice in nine through 12 not to, is it best practice in six through eight? I don't know. So if you could get back to us with that question, with all the other circulating arguments aside, just that simple question. And if the answer is no, then we need to deal with that.
And I assure the committee that I'd be researching it by reaching out to my peers and doing some of my own investigation.
Okay, so, I mean, I think that's the next thing that we need to hear before the next meeting, is what that answer is, and then all the other stuff will work itself out. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Final question.
I don't anticipate having that information by next week. But that, there's nothing that we're voting on that is ...
Okay, that's gonna, okay.
Final question regarding Ms. Ackley. Has she left, or is she still here?
I'm gonna cover that in my personal.
Okay. All right, so if there aren't any other questions for Michelle on curriculum instruction, then we will move on to personnel with Judy.
Okay.
All right, so we did meet on Tuesday, and the whole committee was present. So I'll go through the agenda items. Number two is giving additional payment of hours for the guidance counselor in the high school who had to do additional scheduling modifications. So that's in there. Number three is to give an additional instructional assignment to Mr. Campos, who teaches Spanish in the middle school. That, I believe, Scott, was to help with the overcrowding situation.
Correct. To bring down our numbers in classes at the middle school.
All right. The other important things. I'm gonna skip two. Let's see. So we have before and after-school staff listed. We have back-to-school night babysitting on the agenda. Number seven, Ms. Rexler has received her master, so she'll go up in the pay scale. And then number eight, as Michelle mentioned, is we did have a resignation of Susan Ackley, the Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction for Language Arts, History, and World Language. So I regret to announce that. That will be effective ...
November 27th.
November 22nd. She gives 60 days, right? Okay, so I have a timeline here talking about what our plan is for filling that position. And the position has been advertised with the Star Ledger, NewJerseySchools.com, NewJerseyHire.com, and LinkedIn, and closing the deadline for submission of applications for October 16th. Round one interviews will be on October 26th and 27th. That includes representatives from the teaching staff, the leadership team, Dr. Taylor, of course, and another supervisor. At the committee, we did ask of also, since this person is supervising world language, if we could add a teacher from the world language team to be in there as well. So Dr. Taylor said he would do that. Then we'll have second round interviews on November 1st, which is when the Personnel Committee also joins the principals to participate in the interviews. And then November 6th will be the final interview with Dr. Taylor, background checks, and hopefully come to the board with a new candidate on November 13th and vote on it November 20th, starting date January 22nd at the latest, right?
Absolutely. We currently have 59 applicants. Position was posted last Wednesday. We have another three I'm waiting on. We're doing some recruiting, so. Don't understand.
We also have found a replacement for Ms. Moran over in Bartle, so we'll have a new administrative secretary starting in that position effective November 16th. And we have some Schedule B positions that have been filled. That's number 11. We have a volunteer girls volleyball coach, which we need that, so that's wonderful. Number 13 is to approve the appointment of independent studies for the following teachers. Scott, can you explain a little bit more about how the independent study program works?
Absolutely. So when our high school students choose to take on a project of their own for which for which they only receive pass/fail credit, they don't get a grade on it. It's work that they might do during a free period. It could even be work that's being done in a class in addition to what they're already doing in class. We do assign a teacher to support the student. So, they'll come up with an independent study title. It'll show up on the transcript as independent study dash, whatever the title of the project is. And we do compensate the teachers $100 per student for overseeing the project.
Thank you.
Just, you know, I'm sorry. Maybe I should also clarify that you're going to see a lot more of quote-unquote "option two" independent studies. These are the students who are opting out of physical education class because they're already in part of organized sports. They're dancers. They can actually opt out of the seat time and not be in the class, but still get the credit.
Right, great. And skipping ahead, oh. Number 16, so we have the Chinese language teacher being hired to do any translation we need for the educational services department. So, if there's a child study team meeting. And nothing else really nude, exciting on the rest of the agenda. So, let me highlight some other important things, though.
Oh, that one change you have to read in, though?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For number 19?
Number 19, okay. Sorry, Darcy, you just gave that to me.
Is that the top of page eight?
Oh, yeah, under substitute.
Yeah, taking off Annie Hodges, correct?
Yes, yeah, so we're going to scratch Annie Hodges from number 19. All right, so then we talked about a topic near and dear to my heart, which is the school media specialist. And I am unhappy to report that we still do not have a candidate for that position. So, we are reposting the position with the Star Ledger, giving the option for candidates who might want to pursue alternate route. So, for anyone that doesn't know what the credentials you have to have for a school media specialist, you have to have not only your master's in school media specialist, but you also have to have your education credits. Rutgers, for example, you have to take nine credits in education in addition, excuse me, to completing your master's degree in Rutgers Closet and Information. So, I think one of the thoughts is perhaps if we found someone that had their master's in information but hadn't finished their teaching cert, that we would consider that candidate. We also reached out to three new universities, colleges that do have school media specialties in hopes that maybe we'll find some candidates. We had been focusing mostly on Rutgers because that is the biggest school in the area that has this library science program. But we need to make sure we have reached out to all of our avenues. I also have spoken to a number of people I know in the field for them to just try to spread the word, word of mouth. And the person that is the head of Rutgers School Media Program has been notified of the job. So, we're really trying to get the word out. We'll see what happens. I don't really know what else we can possibly do. But we're looking, so we'll see what happens. We are not giving up. Now, let's see what else. We also just started talking quickly, but we ran out of time in our meeting, that we do have three members of the leadership team that are up for tenure. The committee will be going through and talking about that in the next couple of months before we come to the board with our decision for more discussion.
I can tell you that the latest information on an applicant pool tells me that we currently have four applicants for the Irving Media Specialist position since we reposted last week.
Okay, great.
And eight at Bartle. Now, I can't even tell you if they're qualified, but I can tell you that that's the number that people who submitted.
Which is sort of better than we were doing before, so.
That's better than nothing. So, we'll take a look at those credentials as soon as the date closes.
Great.
So, can I just ask what's happening at this point at Bartle and Irving?
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
What is happening now? What's happening at Bartle and Irving?
So, right now, because Mr. Benjamin scheduled teachers, general education teachers, to co-teach with the media specialists or wherever it is, the teachers are taking their kids to the media center where they would normally have media. And they're supposed to be able to check out books. I'm looking into whether that's actually happening, but that's the plan. And they're also, the teachers are extending the literacy block. So, they're incorporating specifically more writing instruction during that time.
That's all I have.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for Judy?
Yeah, in relation to the, I forget the title now, supervisor of curriculum and instruction. Prior to us moving forward with looking for another candidate for this position, did we ever do an evaluation of whether or not that job description is actually something that was effective within the school district and something that was actually beneficial to our district? Because I think we-
Well, not formally. I mean, I don't know what metrics we would use. I guess I could survey staff. But we recall when, a couple of years ago, when I first introduced the idea of bringing in supervisors, I had surveyed staff to ask what they feel they could most use. And they all said, a vast majority said, content-specific people who can help on the ground, go in there and do model lessons and whatnot. I mean, if you have some ideas about what metric I could use, I could consider it.
In thinking about it, where I had some of my reservations was it seemed to be so across the board where she was from Irving through to the high school. And being able to serve in a capacity was benefiting the teachers on all levels within all the different grades. And whether or not that person would be able to do that kind of task. And then also married to all the administrative things that they were doing in terms of teacher reviews and the in-classroom contact. There was a lot of different things that were within that role. And whether or not hiring someone, whether we want to try to facilitate that full width and breadth of what we had before or whether or not we need to focus it and tune it more to the district.
That's a great question. And I can tell you, the committee debated the finalists' credentials and considered what you've just pointed out. I think, I mean, I myself was a supervisor of curriculum instruction for a K-8 district, not a K-12. And it worked for me. I think it depends on the candidate. And rather, I don't want to speak too much detail about personnel matters, but I think if we find the right candidate, that person can actually do the job, K-12. I mean, unless the board personnel committee has any other comment.
I think this is one of the conundrums of a small district, right? I mean, before, we just had an assistant superintendent who did everything. I mean, all curriculum in all disciplines.
Well, I think at one point we had department heads too that facilitated.
Talking about before we did this and then we had, I mean, you're going back, you're going back.
You're saying very recent.
A very long time. So, I mean, this is certainly a better model and more honed in where you at least have people focusing in on, you know, somewhat related fields that they have, you know, specific content area knowledge of.
So.
I mean, I think the concept of trying to have some continuity throughout the district is what we were striving for. I think where it does become difficult is finding someone that not even is able to do just K through 12, but including also, you know, ELA, world history, language, you know, attend the leadership team meetings. I loved seeing Ms. Ackley out at the different art events at night, supporting the kids. That was wonderful. So, it's a big job. I think we need it, whether it's, you're able to be successful equally in all those departments is the key question, I think.
All right, does anybody have any other questions for Judy?
I do.
Okay, so Anne's not here to do the policy report, but I heard that Michelle's going to be taking over that responsibility for her.
Yes, and if nobody minds, I am going to leave after I give the policy report. Okay. So, yeah, no, tonight's a big night in my house. So, I'm going to try and do this quickly. I'm going to read what Anne wrote. Although I was at the meeting live and in person, I'm going to try and keep my comments short. So, policy 1240, evaluation of the superintendent. Strauss Esme suggested a clarifying change removing written from written performance report so that the policy committee agreed that wasn't a terribly big change and there still will be the same practice. So, a performance report will still be written. The policy committee also made its own modification to this policy in order to allow the board to delegate to the board president the job of discussing the evaluation with the superintendent rather than requiring the superintendent to meet with the entire board or a majority of, to discuss his or her evaluation. Policy 3126 is induction program for provisional teachers. This policy was previously called the district mentoring program. Strauss Esme suggested numerous changes to make the policy consistent with the amendments to the New Jersey Administrative Code 6A9C, professional development. The administration found the changes acceptable, as did the policy committee. Then there were policies on the evaluation of staff. And those were 3221, 3222, 3223, and 3224. Strauss Esme suggested a variety of changes to 3221 through 3224 in order to make the board's policies consistent with recent amendments to Administrative Code 6A10, educator effectiveness. And the administration and the committee were comfortable with those suggestions. Anne added a note that although Strauss Esme hasn't proposed all that many changes to these policies, it was recommended numerous changes to the board regulations that actually lay out the specifics of how each policy will be implemented. So, the board has made a practice of relying on the administration to update our manual of regulations as appropriate in order to implement our policies. The regulations are not on the district website, but of course, interested members of the public can request copies. So, the next policy was 3240, professional development. Here Strauss Esme has recommended changes to bring this policy in line with recent amendments to the NJ Administrative Code 6A9C, professional development. The administration thought they were mostly unobjectionable and the committee agreed. Additionally, Dr. Taylor proposed that we modify the policy to make clear that in Highland Park, it's not only teachers or administrators who receive professional development, but school staff more generally. We agreed with Scott's changes and they're reflected in the proposed policy. Policy 5230 is next, late arrival and early dismissal. The administration suggested changes to ensure that our policy is consistent with our new high school schedule. The committee agreed that those changes were effective and added a few tweaks of our own, but not anything significant. It just reflects our current practice. Policy 8550 is outstanding food service charges. According to Strauss Esme, school districts participating in the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program have been informed by the U.S. Department of Agriculture that they must have an unpaid meal charge policy in place for the 1718 school year. So, this is our district's proposal based on our selections from among the various options suggested by Strauss Esme. We choose options that expressed our preference that if a student's lunch-breakfast account fell into arrears, that it was a matter to be dressed with the parents and guardians, not by providing the student with an inferior meal or no meal at all. Yeah, that was an option.
You get the cheese sandwich.
No, we're not doing cheese sandwich. We're not doing the meal of shame.
Not the cheese.
Yeah, side note, my daughter did forget her lunch money once or twice and that was the meal of shame that she was provided. Terrible. We're not doing that. So, they will be given whatever meal they choose and the parents will be discussed, you know, have a discussion privately. Note that the current policy as adopted in 2015 is incoherent. In one place, we're supposed to have chosen from among two options provided by Strauss Esme, but apparently we did not make a choice at that time. Both options are still in the policy. Yeah. Also, at Darcy's suggestion, we removed Strauss Esme's proposed requirement that school officials notify the Department of Child Protection and Permanency, formerly DIFIS, in certain situations of non-payment.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. We felt that this requirement was unnecessary, and I will add cruel, given that school personnel are already legally obligated to report abuse or neglect. And also, we did not want to expand that obligation based on a parent's failure to provide a child with a simple $2.10 or whatever it costs for lunch. Okay, moving on. Policy for consideration on second reading is 2461, special education-receiving schools. This is the policy we passed on first reading at our last voting meeting. The background is that Strauss Esme proposed a variety of changes to reflect a June 2017 memorandum from the New Jersey Department of Education requiring schools to make their policies conform with amendments to the New Jersey Administrative Code 6A14 and 6A23A-1822. The policy is mandatory per Strauss Esme. Quote, "All approved private schools for students with disabilities in public-receiving schools are required to adopt these revised policies and certify that they will comply with the procedures in order to ensure compliance with state and federal law," unquote, "and must file a quote 'statement of assurance,' unquote, indicating adoption of the policy." And that concludes my policy report. Thank you.
Beautifully done. I wanted to thank Anne and the whole policy committee because, you know, obviously, a board of education is a policymaking body. That's what we do. But this is kind of like the tedious routine, like drudgery of doing board work as well. It's not terribly scintillating sometimes.
Yes, thank you to Mark and Anne, especially Anne.
Thank you to everyone. I read through everything. I thought everything made sense to me. There was one error, clerical error, I saw somewhere, but I'll send that note to Susan. The only substantive question I had was on 8550, the unpaid meal charges one, where there's a paragraph that's been inserted. I don't know if this is inserted by Strauss Esme or by us. And it says, "This policy shall also be provided to all school and food service staff responsible for the enforcement of this policy, including school administrators." Oh, actually, okay, that makes sense.
And that was a Strauss Esme recommendation.
That is, okay, this policy. Okay, actually, you know what? That's funny. I actually misread it. And I was, instead of reading school and food service, I was thinking it had to be given out to like everybody, you know, like parents and, oh, like, okay, that makes more sense. School and food service staff should have it. All right, I take it back. All right, perfect. That's it, I've got nothing. Does anybody else have any questions? Go home.
I did still have some concerns related to the late arrival and early dismissal. And previously, a lot of this was covered by the Student Handbook, where the Student Handbook required students that were excused from attending school to have parental permission and/or have a good attendance record and/or have passing grades. So, I have concerns where like if a student at the beginning of the year does not, because one of the things that happened is if they didn't sign up for a class, they were automatically assigned to study hall. I didn't realize during Mr. Lassiter's presentation that students that said, "I'm not going to sign up for a class," that if they wanted to be assigned to study hall, they would just have an empty period. Thereby, they wouldn't have to come to school. So, like if a student at the beginning of the year decides, "I'm not going to sign up for study hall. I'm going to sleep in. I'm going to use that to my advantage." Great, but if that student starts to slip in terms of their grades or their attendance, my concern is that they're not part of study hall. They're not eligible to come in to get assistance in terms of coming in and receiving extra tutoring for a class that they're having a tough time with. And I also feel like if they're chronically tardy or late to school or chronically not in attendance, that they should not necessarily have the option of sleeping in, that they should be coming into school to-
So, you think making them come in earlier would make them more punctual?
I think having a mandatory requirement that they come into school would be beneficial.
They do, it's just a little later. Making it earlier is kind of counterintuitive to my mind.
I don't see it that way.
If you're having trouble with punctuality?
Yeah, if you're having trouble with punctuality and you're coming in, then you have to report at the beginning of study hall.
So, I'm going to ask you, are there policy suggestions here that you want to make? If not, I mean, we could debate the actual practice of this all day long. So, if, again, if there are specific policy suggestions you have here, you can make them. I think you made some. I think this is what the policy committee came back with. Does anyone else share any of these concerns about the policy or?
And then I think the, well, so like going over it very quickly then, that it would require parental consent, that the parental consent would exist until the parent had the ability to revoke that consent. And also, the principal would have the ability to revoke that consent. The students aren't on school property, but during that time. The students aren't on school property, but during that time, so if they're excused from school, that they're not hanging out somewhere on school property, and if they are, then the principal can say, "Hey, you got to go report to the study hall, you got to go report to the cafeteria." And that if they are starting to fail a particular course or something else, that they come into study hall so that that way, they can receive additional support services.
But that's procedural more than policy. Is there anything that would preclude a student from signing up for a study hall in that first period if they were...
No. I'm sorry, looking at me? Not at all. Forgive me. I'm still thinking about the, how we're going to make sure that your concerns are heard. No. You can, look, if it's the middle of the year and a student says to Mr. Lassiter, "I'd actually like to have a study hall," we can schedule the person to study hall for a period. Nothing that precludes us from doing that, but it's procedural. So, can I use my mic time to point out that I think, I'm trying to, what I was thinking before is I'm trying to consider the best protocol for you to address your concerns. I don't think you should wait until Jan, February, March, when we talk about the next year's program of study. But I'm wondering if, how, an email to a concerned parent and Mr. Lassiter expressing some of these concerns would help? Maybe that would be the right venue, the right chain of command, protocols to use.
Because if nothing else, at the end of the school year or prior to, I'd like to evaluate how this has worked for students of all...
Yeah, I mean, we've done that with anything. I mean, with the middle school schedule, we had Ms. O. come back and talk about how that worked or didn't work. I mean, we're not going to, like, just do this, and then, like, oh, yeah, okay. I mean, we'll, we'll definitely follow through on it.
Yeah, I just feel like we kind of leapt a little bit further forward than we might have...
We can ask students, "How's it going, guys?"
Do you come in late or do you come in first period? I, I always come in late. I don't, I mean, I, and I, well, maybe I have a bad understanding of the policy, but my understanding was that if I ever wanted to, I could come in early and take advantage of that study hall, which I have yet to do, but I constantly tell myself I'm going to. But, and it's also my understanding that if you arrive to school after 8:15 but before, I think it's 8:30 or so, the doors are actually locked. So, they open the doors and then they lock them so that students arriving after you can technically get into study hall, but then before the start of the, that first kind of everybody's in the school period of the day, they are not allowed to just kind of roam. But I don't know if that's, but I actually don't know if that's being enforced, because I've never been that early.
I come in for a Period 1 class because Jim did not fit, and I've noticed that students do, they do, they are able to enforce that they go directly to the cafeteria. But from being there that early, I have not seen many students who aren't in a Period 1 class at school, so maybe that'll change as the year progresses, but so far, no. I haven't seen a lot. But I, those who do, I haven't seen them roaming the halls, they're mostly in the cafeteria.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right. So, does anybody have any other policy concerns? New? All right, so, we will move on to, oh, we have policy for second reading. You want to just, can you just...
She spoke about that.
Did we do that? Okay, 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 good. All right, good, sorry. All right, equity. Sharice, you have anything for us?
The only things that I have, Equity and Excellence Committee has not met. My apologies to everyone, but scheduling has been a bit of a nightmare for me. The Pathway to Excellence Committee Focus Area, Focus Area 1 meeting will be tomorrow, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., and I am not going to be able to attend that meeting. If anyone else is going to be able to be there, that would be wonderful, but I cannot be there tomorrow. The other thing was that the Teen Center is going to be running the Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration this Thursday, 5:30 to 7:30 in the high school cafeteria. So, come on out and celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, and happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, everyone.
I like the way you worked that in there. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or, nope? Okay, so, public comment, the Highland Park Board of Education has once again welcomed Keith Presti to the microphone.
Keith Presti, Highland Park Education Association President. These are very super minor things in the policies, just thought I'd point them out since I saw them. In 3222, page 3 of 3, on the second paragraph, I think both of those are supposed to be tenured, not non-tenured.
I'm sorry, Mr. Presti, can you wait one second?
Sure.
I want to flag that. 3222, you said?
Yeah.
What page?
On the third page, second paragraph, first and second sentence, it says, "Non-tenured," but this is a policy for tenured staff. So, I think that's just a misprint, because then in the, the next sentence, it says, "Tenured."
Okay, thanks.
In 3240, on page 2, second line, you have a weird space apostrophe thing going on.
Hey, hey.
Employees.
32...
3240.
Oh, that was, that was my one that I was...
Is that the one?
You stole thunder.
What page?
Page 2.
That's your clerical...
Yeah, that was my clerical. That was my clerical one. I found that.
What line?
Second line, first word, employees, has a space, and it's turning your apostrophe into a quote thing. And then on the, and then in 5230, policy...
Oh, wait a second, I'm sorry. I was highlighting...
He's annotating PDFs here, this takes time. You can't rush this.
Yeah, I can't change it, I'll fly. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And in policy 5230...
Our favorite policy.
One, two, three, four, five. The fifth paragraph, second line, you just have a space there, it's supposed to be one parent, not on E. parent.
Yeah.
Sorry, nitpicking, but I saw them.
You're like, I got to do something to keep myself busy back here.
Yeah. Holding court back there with your table.
Thank you, Mr. Presti. I like your table, that's quite the setup. That's fabulous. Thank you, sir. So, seeing as there's no other public comment, because there's no other public, I'll move on to the president's report. I just wanted to let everyone know quickly that Jonathan has let us know that our first appeal of Hattieka's expansion is finally going to be heard. So, let me see, so, oral argument has been scheduled for Wednesday, November 8th, at 9:00 a.m. in Newark, before Part G, whatever that means, whatever court that is, is in Newark. So, this is our original appeal of Hattieka's expansion. They've received two expansions in the last two years, so this is the appeal of the expansion into grades 6 through 8, which, this was actually decided to go forward with this appeal was actually decided by a completely different board. This was decided before Dr. Taylor was sitting in this seat. So, this, this is how long it has taken to bring this appeal to fruition. The board actually decided in late, early, late April, early May of 2015 to go forward with this appeal. So, it's taken that two-plus years to get to the point where oral arguments are finally going to be heard. So, this is, we're being represented in the appellate division by David Rubin. He's representing us in both of these cases. This is the case that Edison has also joined with us in this appeal. So, I'm very much looking forward to the outcome of that, and sometime between now and November 8th, we're going to put together a meeting of Jonathan's team and David and myself and possibly some folks from Edison, just to make sure we have all our ducks in a row before they, before they walk into court on November 8th. So, I will keep everyone apprised of how that goes. So, that was all I have. Does anybody have any questions or anything they want me to, any questions they want me to put forward? No? Okay. So, we don't have anything on the agenda for old business. Does anybody have anything? Yeah, you guys can go. Anytime after 9:00, you can just...
No, we know, we know.
Okay. Nobody has anything for...
They're just so fascinated. They're so fascinated.
I know, we are so riveting.
By every word.
We are so riveting. All right, so, we don't have anything for old business. New business, the first thing we have on there is our board goals, and look at this, Dr. Taylor has managed to get the, the information that he put together for us with our proposal for the board goals for 2017, 2018. So, part of what Dr. Taylor and I did when we got together last time was kind of did a cursory look at the, the goals that we had for the 1617 school year and kind of take a look at, you know, how did we do on those, or there, and some, you know, we haven't, pretty much haven't gotten to. So, it doesn't make sense to reinvent the wheel. If we felt strongly about those things last year, then we should, and we haven't gotten to them, then we should probably move forward with them. So, I think that's pretty much all of G 1.2, right, is, is stuff that we've moved forward...
No, well, not really, not necessarily all of them. What I did was, like I did last year, I pull out some of the more high-profile action steps under these goals and those that I think fit the board's mission and vision, and I reworded the action steps in minor ways, too, to, to speak more the language of the board. So, this is just the proposal. Do you, how about I let you have a read G 1.1?
I'm sorry?
Should I have everybody read each section? You want to discuss each section first?
Yeah, and everybody, this is, if you want to take a look at it on your own computer, it is in everybody's drive, so you don't have to be craning your neck to look at it on there. I just thought it would be nice to have that up there for everybody at home. But if you go into your, your board folder, it is in the new, this document is in the new business, the new business section. So, if everybody wants to open that up, we can take a quick look.
While you're doing that, just, we'll also tell you that the action steps under these, these goals I'm proposing, we adopt, you adopt as a board, may seem familiar to some. You've seen the Bartles School Social Emotional Learning Lab showing up in, you know, recent years. That's because we are still not fully implemented. We haven't fully, we haven't fully implemented some of these action steps. So, I have rolled some of these over into our formal strategic plan, and I'm also throwing them out to the board, as potential goals. At the bottom of the document, the second half of the document, is my summary of attainment or not of the goals from last year. I rolled some of those goals from last year into the proposal for next year. So, for instance, detracking middle school classes shows up again in G 1.2 for next year, in my proposal for next year, because it's something that we didn't fully implement this past year.
Okay, does anybody have any, I mean, do you want to read through them, just so we can kind of get a sense of them, or ones that are proposed, or is everybody just kind of so blasted at this point?
We're so tired right now, yeah.
I know.
And I admit, I don't have any recommendations, but one, one of the things that struck me is that we have a lot of implements, but we don't have anything to research this year. And I, like I said, I don't have anything to throw in there on my own end of things I'd like to research, but I felt like we had, we had immediate sort of goals for ourselves, and then we had something that we're, we're going towards.
That's a great point. And let me tell you what I was thinking. Do with it what you want. So, we're in the second year of our strategic plan, and those of you who will be coming tomorrow night will see that the, the plans for all four focus areas only take us into the rest of this school year, whereas last year's strategic plan looked ahead to the year following. So, last year, we were looking at goals that were, I'm sorry, action steps that had us researching things we hoped to be in the implementation phase with this year. My reason for not projecting our plan beyond this school year is because I think it would be time for us to bring back the community like we did two years ago come the end of this school year, to say, "Okay, let's check in. Where do we want to go in the next two years?" So, in other words, we're taking this, in my view, I think we should be taking this in two years increments. So, there are no reasons, I didn't suggest any research steps, because right now, this is the year we're trying to implement everything that we were researching last year. And I guess I would caution us to throw in, throw out research ideas in this proposal without having consulted with the community like we did two years ago. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Does that make sense to everybody else?
Yes.
All right, so, I mean, I also, just as an aside, I'm not going to be here for next week's meeting. I leave on Thursday for conference for my, for my job, so I will be in Oakland, California from Thursday night until late Tuesday night for the Network for Public Education's Fourth Annual National Conference, which I'm very excited about. But so, I will not be able to be here. So, Anna, we're in the meeting next week, and I told her, you know, it might be good if this week, we just kind of look at this. I'm seeing a lot of very tired, kind of blank stares around the table, so this may not be the best time to dive into a full, full-fledged conversation about board goals. But now, we know we have them all, we know they're here, so, like, I'd fully, you know, have faith in you guys to do this next week and to come up with something that, you know, reflects where we all want to go. So, like, really take a really solid, solid look at these over the course of this week, and, you know, if you have any questions, email me or email Scott, and let's absolutely get these hammered out.
I think this is great to jump us into it. What happens if we're not quite where we need to be even next week? Are we under an obligation to...
There's no timeline for our board goals, but the most important thing about, I mean, I think there's two things. We have the strategic plan, which is continuing to guide the administration's work, whether we do this in, you know, October or in November. So, it's not like all work is going to come to a standstill. But deciding on these goals is then what we use as our rubric for Dr. Taylor's evaluation later in the year. So, you know, we need to get to these sooner or later, so he knows what the things are that the board is, you know, absolutely saying, "Here are the things that we want you to work on." And we need to give him the amount of time that he needs to actually then do the work that needs to be done based on those goals.
I think it's worth some time at home.
So, we don't want to kick, yeah, we don't want to kick this can too far down the road. We definitely want to do this within the next couple of meetings, so, you know, but I also don't want us all to be like, "Yeah, that's good," because we're all tired and it's quarter to 10. So... Scott has an idea.
I have an idea. And I don't know whether we can do it. It could be considered having established quorum. What if we collaborated on the Google Doc?
We can't do that.
We can't, okay. That's...
I am absolutely sure that Jonathan will tell us that that is an open...
That's an open, okay.
That is not, I mean, any individual board member can email me or you with their concerns, but we can't do anything.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Actually, I, here, I'm going to tell you this. I actually went to a meeting over the summer that was about OPMA and Oprah, because, you know, these are things I do for entertainment. And even me writing you this little note, this piece of paper is Oprah-able. If somebody says, "Hey, I saw the board president write the superintendent a note in the middle of the meeting," I don't know what that says.
Well, now that I know that, I'm going to have to scan this note, keep it somewhere digitally, and, okay.
So, I mean, it's, I mean, it's really kind of, it's for real, you know? I mean, when I sit in closed session and go, "We can't talk about that." It's for a reason, like, everything, they're called sunshine laws for a reason. It's so, everything is out in public, and there's no, you know, crazy things don't happen, and then, you know, we sit at the board table and we don't have an answer for it, you know, because everything that we do, as much as possible, it's not those, you know, legal personnel, whatever, is all done out in the open. So, we get to sit out here and be really tired and talk about this stuff.
Darcy did ask me to at least have an explanation for why we didn't achieve, why potentially as a board, didn't achieve certain goals from last year. And I tried to, to do that in print here for you, but I do have some other notes. I don't know if it's, if we're too late in getting into it, but I, I can speak to some of your questions if you have any about why we didn't achieve certain goals.
I think everybody is blasted.
Yeah.
Yes. I think you guys keep fleshing this out a little bit more last, next week. If you can get somewhere with it, I think that's great. Like I said, ask questions in, in the interim, and then we can, you know, see where we get with it, see where we get with it next week. Everybody cool with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, for the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, I put that onto the agenda, but then I realized when I actually sat down and looked at the timeline, we do actually have one more meeting. We have a meeting in November before I go to the delegate assembly, so we have a little bit more time, and you guys had so much to read this week, you know, for this week with policies and all this other stuff. I figured we'll just, we'll put that off until then. So, they are already on the drive. If you're super curious, there's only two of them, they're not terribly long, they're not terribly involved or complicated. not terribly involved or complicated, but this isn't something that we need to vote on or anything. So we can just have a quick board discussion about it in November and then I'll go to the delegate assembly, I think it's on the 18th, November 18th. And, and yeah, that's that. So CUSAC report, is there anything we want to say about that? I mean, we obviously, we're not going to move that, that'll be for the next meeting.
There's just one comment I'll make. You'll notice that I scored us a zero, which means we didn't satisfy one particular requirement in the curriculum section. That's because the English Language Arts Curriculum hasn't been aligned yet formally to the new New Jersey State standards. You will be adopting that curriculum, I hope, next week, which would then satisfy the requirement. But we still are considered highly effective.
And there was one under finance as well.
Yeah, oh yes, there is. There's a financing, you want to point that out?
Yes. The finance item is regarding the reporting within a 68 timeline on the board secretary and treasurer reports. And due to the fact that we were without a treasurer for three months, we were delayed on submitting those reports. So that is the reason that we scored ourselves with a zero on that one.
Okay, but now that's all...
Yes, we have a treasurer now and we're getting the reports.
Wonderful. Okay. So that, the CUSAC report is also on the drive, so, and that's also in that new business section on the drive. So if you get a chance to take a look at that between now and when you vote on it next week, please do. All right, public comment. Keith, you find any more mistakes while you were, nope, you're good, okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.